Franklin County Board of County Commissioners not back in session. Next on the agenda be Mr. Allen Pierce.
And Commissioners, as I informed you earlier, Mr. Pierce is in Tallahassee right now at the Emergency State Emergency Management Office. Mr. Senator Muffet coordinated this meeting and apparently where we're trying to find out if there's a quicker way to receive money from FEMA. And that's where he is and I'm sure he'll call each of you, if not this afternoon, by tomorrow morning for sure to update you as to what was said at the meeting this morning. With that being said, he left a very short blurb here for me to read to let you guys know there are no new action items to report. Work in FEMA approval for repairs to Alligator Drive continues and the Triumph staff has given the go-ahead for a full application for the airport fuel system. So Allen will start working on that. The county will be requesting nine hundred and twenty K of Triumph funds, which will be matched by two hundred and seventy of non-Triumph funds, hundred thousand. So, I'm sure he'll update you that too. And with that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I will move on to my report.
Okay, next on the agenda be Mr. Michael Marone, County Coordinator, report.
The Board at your last meeting awarded the design and resurfacing improvements of one point five five three miles of County Road thirty A to the county engineers, Dewberry Incorporated. This is an FDOT scrap-funded program for a hundred eleven thousand, six hundred six, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars that will resurface from the Gulf County line to thirteen-mile road. Attached to my report is Dewberry's contract for this design project. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature on this contract.
Page of the board.
Senator.
Second.
Got a motion on full by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Now this thirty, that's to the west.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? All in favor? All opposed? That pass, anonymous.
Item number two, the sheriff's office has requested the chairman's signature on the E nine-one-one rural county grant program application. This is a standard grant that the sheriff applies for every year to assist with the installation and maintenance of an enhanced nine-one-one, referred to as E nine-one-one system, and to provide seamless E nine-one-one throughout the state of Florida. Unfortunately, the application deadline was yesterday, April first, the day prior to today's, to today's meeting. So I ask the chairman to sign the application with the understanding that I would request the board to ratify his signature today. Board action to ratify the chairman's signature on the E nine-one-one rural county grant program application.
So moved.
Got a motion on full by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Michael, if you know, and I don't have a problem with it, but didn't we do a similar action last year?
Yes.
Where they, they had to do it by a certain time and we had to ratify it later?
Yes, sir.
And if it's a yearly grant, can they please, next year, get it to us ahead of time?
Yes, I, yes, sir.
No, that shouldn't be too very complicated.
Okay. Our conversation with the sheriff.
You want to add that to your motion?
No, no, I think direction's good. I'm good with that.
All righty. All in favor? All opposed? That pass, anonymous.
At your last meeting, Mr. Parrish got the board authorized the chairman's signature on an FDOT grant for the remaining funding for the FAA-required airport master plan update. Attached is a task order from AFCON to do the master plan update, which is a two-year process. During this time, you'll receive continuous updates from your airport manager, Mr. Jason Puckett, as well as representatives from the airport engineers, AFCON. Board action to sign the task order.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on full by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on that? All in favor? All opposed? Pass, anonymous.
Item number four, finally, 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 inform the board that I attended the Lombardi Waterfront Park and Museum substantial inspection on Friday, March twenty-ninth, at two P.M., which means the project is on track for final inspection this Friday, April fifth, completing the project. Hip, hip, hooray. I attached some pictures of the park and the museum to my report. County staff would like to schedule a ribbon-cutting ceremony on April eighteenth at ten A.M., officially opening the park, providing there are no scheduled conflicts with any of the commissioners. Board action to authorize staff to schedule and coordinate the Lombardi ribbon-cutting ceremony officially opening Lombardi Park on April eighteenth at ten A.M. A D.E.P. is available, I got the email yesterday, they're going to bring as many members. The contractor, he's available, so it's just up to the board now.
Page of the board.
Comment first, please, Mr. Chairman. My, I, I'd like to make a recommendation or make a motion that the board change the name of Lombardi Waterfront Park and Museum to the Olin B. Ward Waterfront Park and Museum. He contributed a lot to this community and the seafood industry, and I think it's the appropriate thing to do, and I'd like to make a motion to that effect so that the name will be changed during the, for this ribbon-cutting ceremony.
At the ribbon-cutting?
And I'll make a motion to that.
Sir.
Got a motion on full by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on that? Oh, they're, they, people still can't use it to they, to that date? Or, or they're going to let people use?
Actually, no, that, now, it's, now it's your decision, actually, to be very honest with you, about using the ramp. If you would like to, yes, I, we could schedule opening so they can start accessing the boat ramp.
No, I, I mean, I ain't got no problem with that, but I want the public to be aware.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
That's true. I think we intended to have the ribbon-cutting ceremony and then open it up from then on.
From then, okay. From my point of view, the reason I didn't, I'm hesitant to say that because we still haven't done the final inspection, and I don't want anybody to be able to say, oh, someone from the public accessing, that access department did this. It's not the contractor's fault, you see? So I would prefer we have the final inspection Friday. Following week, we do the ribbon-cutting and then the park is wide open. We're good to go. That's, that's my recommendation.
Also, Mr. Chairman, always going to get fond of to go out there and cut the grass and, and clean it all up, because they ain't been out there either, because it's been closed, so get the grass cut and get the little, uh, place where the barbecue grills and all that is, get all that cut and rigged up and cleaned up, get the bathrooms need to be cleaned.
Bathroom's need to be cleaned up. Kind of redo the parking so people know where to park, so it's not a traffic nightmare in there, yeah.
But I know, I know the public's ready.
I know, no, the reason I was asking, because this going, we're going, I get that show on the thing before, before the date, and I don't want nobody to go out there and get run off, so get, get, ready but not ready.
Yes, basically, that's, yes, sir, I see what you're saying, yes, sir. It won't be open to the public until the ribbon-cutting officially on, on the eighteenth. Official ribbon-cutting, that's when we'll be open to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question before we leave this topic. Michael, if changing the name, that, that sign there, the entrance, county needs redoing anyway? So I'm guessing before this ribbon-cutting, we have the sign changed, the name changed?
Yes, sign changed. And I also wanted to make sure, I know this Friday, and I hate to say it this way, I know this Friday is the final, final inspection, just in case, I'd just like a couple more days just to make sure, you know, everything is, is good. But I'll tell y'all, I went up there, it is beautiful. It is, it is something to, to be very proud of, I'm going to tell y'all. Beautiful. I know it's a long time coming, I know we've taken a lot of criticism for as long as the park been shut down, but it is really nice out there.
It's been a whole year.
Yes, sir.
A whole year.
And some, yes.
It supposed to have been open in September.
Yes.
So it's been a whole year with the rain and hurricane and hurricane messed up some stuff, they had to tear it out and start over, I mean, it's just been one thing after another, but I think it'd be very advantageous for the public once it's opened back up.
That park, that pavilion is nice, and once we get the museum with all the stations and some Royce's production stuff going on in there and the TVs, it, it's, I mean, they even put small movie doors in the room into the small theater that they're, it's, it's really nice.
That's a small theater room there.
Yeah.
It's really nice.
Got to go there and check it out.
And believe the ribbon-cutting, public can be able to walk through and see all the work that has been done.
Think some of y'all will be very proud of it.
All right. Read the board? All in favor? All opposed? That pass, anonymous.
Okay, item five, I'm going to ask.
You had asked for board action to authorize staff to plan the grand opening, the motion was just to rename the park.
Yep. Oh, I thought it was, they were combining their motion, I apologize.
I, I intended it to be combined.
Okay.
To go with the ribbon-cutting ceremony and changing the name at the same time, so.
I'm in my seat to reflect the same.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
The motion and the second been amended, so to take care of both.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That pass, anonymous.
Okay, item five, I'm going to ask somebody who is a little bit smarter in this field here than me to comment, Commissioner Parrish, if you do not mind. The Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Affairs, the Division of Aquaculture, has informed staff that they are processing new aquaculture leases, lease applications that have been submitted to their office. The county has until April nineteenth to submit comments on and/or to concur or to object to the proposed project. These comments will be used in the evaluation of the proposed application and activity. A copy of the application is attached to my report for discussion and/or action. And I have up there on display, I think, the specific area for their specific application, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Parrish to, I'm going to try my best here to stand and assist him as we talk about the goods and the bads, basically, where they're putting it, how it affects traffic for shrimping, other commercial activity, you know, we, we need to find a way for everything to coexist, but let me stop talking myself into a hole, sir, Commissioner Parrish, if you do not mind.
Uh, as, as Michael said, this was sent to the board and I'm sure it's in everybody's email iPads, and these are some leases that are being proposed by DAX or being proposed by an individual, and DAX has to review it. As we all know, we really don't, don't control the state's submerged land. Uh, my, my contention has been, as we started this, down this road many years ago, four, five, six years ago, however long it's been, is that we don't put these leases in the, in the way of existing industries out there in the bay, whether it be shrimping, crabbing, floundering, you know, right on down, because if we allow this to be put in those, then we're, people's going to load our boardrooms up and say, why didn't you oppose it? Most of the leases that you see here, this is the first one that's being proposed, I was looking for the location, I think this is in Rattlesnake Cove, uh, going back to the email that they sent out, but anyways, as you can see, it's not in the middle of the bay, and that's, you know, that's what I don't want to see, is have all these leases in the middle of our bay, and then shrimpers have problems, and then other people have problems. They're all done in floating cages, so they're up in the water column, which means that you will not be able to transition these leases, or you tear your motor up and tangled all the equipment in your motors.
Big, this thousand-foot field, like this.
So.
Right there.
The leases that I've seen in this proposed package all seem to be out of the way of the exist, of traditional uses of the bay, words I like to use. And also, as we look at these, these different sites, if you notice, every one of them is up against the hill pretty much, it has to be on a sandy area, it cannot be over the top of, of public bars, DAX doesn't allow that. Let's see here, yeah, this, this particular one is in Rattlesnake Cove. There's, there's several more, and a bunch more has been taken to DAX for approval. Most, everyone of them says there'll be no docks going to them, so that doesn't, there's one, uh, one in Goose Island, individuals, the individuals that are asking for it is not, you know, not for us to take action on the individual, but just where the leases are being proposed.
Trying to keep up here, does, does this picture help any? No.
I, I'm looking for that same picture on my iPad here.
Oh, it is.
To look at the right-hand column and see what the different colors represent. And I don't see that particular.
It has to do with the seagrass in the area and the.
So the legend is, the legend is.
That's what it is.
Representing. But those, those are things that they have to look at, is seagrasses, whether it's in existing oyster bars there. And also, you know, need input from the board, because there's a, I've been told that there's going to be a meeting with state representatives that want to know our thoughts, and she's, Portia Sappis saying she's been overloaded with people requesting these leases, and they want guidance from the county as to how the county feels about it. And as I said, my opinion, I'm just one member of the board, my opinion is not to put it where it, it, you have a human conflict with different industries trying to operate in the waters of Apalachicola Bay. That's the only concern really that I have with this, and I've had from the beginning, but we need input from the board to, how the board feels about all these leases, because the way she's saying that she has, you know, dozens of more requests for leases.
Yeah.
What they want is guidance from the county as to where these leases should be, where, where it would be out of conflict with the existing traditional uses of the bay. And with that, I'm going to leave, leave it up to the board members to state their personal opinions and give direction as to how the board should proceed with this.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, first thing, this is page one seventy-seven on, on your iPads and in your packet, just to give you a bearing as to where you are and where I am, and Commissioner Jones, you're right, that talks about the seagrass thing, so above that, we could go to the other pictures, which is basically one, where I was originally was one seventy-four. But Commissioner, if, if there's going to be a meeting, Commissioners, I would ask the board to please, you know, consider authorizing Commissioner Parrish to attend that meeting on behalf of the county, you know, and we funnel all our comments and questions now through him, and then he'd come back and let us know, and then I could formulate an email that we would officially send to the state, saying, okay, we, we went to your meeting, we've got your applications, here's where we stand, this is what we want you guys to consider.
We need the input from the.
Where's it going to, where's the meeting going to be at, do you know?
Uh, I haven't been told exactly where.
But it's going to be this month?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to approve Commissioner Parrish to go to this meeting on our behalf, and also, his travel to be paid for to get there and back.
Got a motion on full by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke. Discussion?
Yes, uh, I, I think the meeting is going to be in Appalachia, there'll be no travel or anything, but I need direction from the board members, how y'all feel about this.
Well, I, I, that's why I asked if you knew where it was going to be, I, I just want to make sure you're covered.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
To get to in front of the meeting, that's all I'll say.
But I need input from, from the board members, how y'all feel, what, what y'all want me to say.
Is all the information in? That's all?
For, for what?
That's just on them, but she's got a bunch more.
Yeah.
That's what I know.
Commissioner, Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Commissioner Parrish, I, I think that the stance this board has taken in the past is an appropriate stance for us going forward, in that, just some of the same things that you've already stated this morning, that in all aquaculture, things that people are trying to start or whatever to expand on the seafood economy would be done in such a way that they're not harmful to navigable waters in the bay and harmful to what, you know, getting in other people's way or therefore causing problems to any shrimping or any other industry in the bay, and, and are just public use, you know, because of the fact they are taking up a whole water column. So as long as they're, I would say, as long as they're of this nature, I, I mean, I, I don't see no problem with it, because at some point, if we're going to continue to have seafood, I think this is our way forward, especially for oysters, you know? I didn't think I'd ever say that in my lifetime, having grown up shoveling oysters if I missed school, yeah, I didn't miss many days of school, I can tell you. Uh, and we also had a retail market, but at that time, that's what everybody did. So I, I just never, ever, in my wildest dreams, imagined it would be where we are today. But I, I do think that our people, time and history has shown that the people that reside in these communities that we call Franklin County have always been very resourceful, they've always been able to reinvent theirself, and I see that as part of that, trying to make a way to go forward, so I'm good with it, as long as it's of this nature.
Well, I got a.
Better pictures, sir.
Yeah. In my opinion, you know, it's okay, they're going to, where the leases and the, this aquaculture is going on. It's coming, we done it back in eighty-five, and it worked, but what I need to know is, I'm hoping that maybe this will be a transition to way they starting the leases, maybe they could shut down the wire bars for a while and let them see what they produce back, uh, help get produced back too. So it's going to take, but it's going to take the same time for them to grow, whether they lease it or what. On the lease, it's going to take a couple of years for them, they just be submerged off the bottom, and they be, like you say, you can't put them out there away. The boats are running over them or everything else, they got to be in a separate, they got to be in an area where no traffic is coming through, and they're going to have to have, the main thing they're going to have is somebody watching.
That's a whole nother ballgame.
We're not, we're not taking action on that.
You're right, you're right.
That's what we done, because we, what we done in eighty-five, we had, we had a night shift, where we worked, we worked our leases, and once a month, or once every two weeks, you had a shift at night, so when nobody coming in and get them, when they get big enough size, if ain't nobody watching them, you know what, don't happen, you know what time it is.
I think everybody that's questioned these leases have been told that, and that they're doing it at their own risk.
Yeah, if they old timers, they know, so, and they work, because I seen them grow back then, but, um, I still, we, they still need to do something to help that wire, they need to shut down that other part for the wirecoat, let it try to work itself back. Well, now, I'd like to see what other information coming in, I hope they send it to us before the meeting, so we can, you know.
All these leases, like they sent these into your iPad, they'll send everything into your iPad, but I just wanted to get the feeling of the board of it. You know, it seems like to me, listening to Commissioner Lively and Commissioner Jones, I hadn't heard of Commissioner Bolt yet, but it seems like everybody's on the same page.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, some thoughts, and, Mr. Parrish, I'm remembering, you spoke from these chambers here maybe last year, about the financial affordability of these leases, and how, how many of our people disenfranchised from the wild-caught market of oysters today might be disenfranchised from the affordability of these leases. And I, to me, I would put an input in that they are financially affordable for people who are, who are shifting from a wild-caught market into some new science that we have, which seems to be a new age here, and I would want them to be affordable. And I think that's a huge need for our people in this oyster industry. And then we train people in a way that they are able to shift into this system.
Yeah, well, it, the lease itself, when you get the lease from the state, that is affordable. It will cost you fifty thousand dollars to buy the cages, the seed oysters, and to get your lease set up to produce. And then for a whole year, that's what you're going to do, is work that lease, get your pole set up, get, buy your baskets, put your seed oysters in, it'll take a year for them to grow. So in that year, you're not going to be able to work a regular job and take care of your lease too, so that's another fifty thousand dollars in order to pay your mortgage and take care of your family. So from an affordability standpoint, your average oysterman that used to work the public bars in Franklin County are not going to be able to afford to get into this industry. Another thing that I failed to bring to the board earlier that I thought about when you were speaking, Commissioner Bolt, was do we want to give Franklin County citizens a priority? Uh, a lot of these people that are doing these leases are coming, there are some from Franklin County, but a lot of them are coming from Georgia and all over the country. My fear is that you come in here and you set all this stuff up, you set the lease up, you get it producing, and then it allows you to sell this lease in ten years to, to an outsider, so I worry about the scenario of the land speculation that went on during the, the big land boom, where you buy something and you set it all up, and then you sell it for, you know, for twice as much or three times as much as what you got invested in it, and those people are gone and a new person takes over. Uh, so there's a lot of different things, aspects and perspectives on, on this wild-caught, I mean, this aquaculture. As Commissioner Lively said, people going in and stealing your stuff at night, uh, I mean, there's a whole lots of, of risk involved in this thing, and, but the question was asked of me is, is does the board want to give a priority or make a recommendation to DAX to give a priority to the people of Franklin County? That, of course, is up to the board, but, but that is something that needs to be addressed at the meeting and needs to be brought forward, if that's the wishes of the board, so how does the board feel on that? Do you want to prioritize and give Franklin County residents? Because if you don't, you have people from what color, you have people from Georgia, as I said, you have people from everywhere, and I'm not opposed to that, but do we want to make sure that our people in Franklin County and our constituents are given a priority? How does the board feel?
Can I weigh in on that?
Yeah, I think they, seventy-five percent, if, at least, if, if not, I would say a hundred, but I, I want to be nice, and go seventy-five, because some of them already in the commie, but we did, the, the people in Franklin County is the one who.
We're known for.
Who's up and down.
That's it.
I meant, they, we the one who, the people in Franklin County is the one who just happened to.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think it'd be right for a hundred percent of them just come out of town and get, and none of the people who was hurt and lost a job, even though they might not kind of afford it, because it could, you know, it's a difference between, like Commissioner Parrish said, this thing going to cost a hundred dollar, you know, people ain't worked in five or six years, and no, I don't see them having no hundred dollar now, they might, I don't know what's in people's pocket, but, you know, you got a hundred dollar now to come up front money, that hard to get, unless they borrowed or got some, some way of getting it. When, when you was on the wirecoat, fifteen, twenty dollar now, you get started, buy a boat, buy a motor, with your charm and everything, you get started for that, but that's a long, unless they're going to get some grants from the state or help, I don't know how, we need to check on all that, because these people ain't, they haven't worked in, when the last time they be produced? Forty-five years or better?
For producing steady income, yes, sir, it's been several years.
And, and nobody got that kind of money, not, not a working oysterman, I don't think they might.
Well, I have heard, Mr. Chairman, I have heard that there are, have been some proposals to do grant funds from D.E.P. for people that want to get in the business. Commissioner Parrish, I, I don't know that the state is going to allow us to say we want it to be a hundred percent Franklin County residents, you know, that, they might ask for that input and say, okay, thanks for letting us know, but at the same time, I would be like the chairman, you know, I, I would prefer for it to be people from here, because what I'm finding for people I'm talking to, growing up in East Point, being in East Point, people that are wanting to get involved now are people that were in seafood, had been working other jobs, and they just, they want to get back to their roots, they want to get back to seafood, so it's a whole different business model. Yeah, sure, you used to get it a little bit cheaper, but usually it was a one-man operation. People I know that are trying to get into it now are trying to get three or four guys together and make a business theirself, and they were all involved, and it's just a different business model. And starting any business, you're going to lose money the first couple, two or three years, that's why the federal government lets you claim losses your first three years, so that's, that's just part, it's a business, that's part of a business. But I do think there, there's been talk of grant funds available, and this is making sure that these people that are applying know, but the bigger issues, I, I think, Commissioner Parrish, we, we support, you know, whatever's going to happen, as long as it's done in a way that we're good with, so.
Well, you know, just like you say, ain't no way this, this thing going to be a one-man operation.
No.
No, it's, it's highly impossible.
Yes.
Because it's a twenty, it's twenty-four hour concern, whether you working the lease, it's something for you to do out there twenty-four seven.
You ain't working, you guarding it.
That's right.
And the more, the more work you do, the faster they grow too, you know what I mean?
And the more you need to guard it.
Mm-hmm. You got to keep them baskets clean, and that's right, I mean, the more you clean them, the, they grow, and you got to shift them from that cage to the.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing from the board is that we would like to see Franklin County residents. Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing from the board is that we would like to see Franklin County residents that's been displaced out of the bay given priority. I won't go into percentages and all that. And as Commissioner Jones says, well, they may not give them priority. Well, they may not, but we've done our job in asking.
That's right.
And trying to represent the people that, that live in Franklin County, have worked this bay all their life. So we, we're doing our part. Now, what DAX does, who, who knows? But I think we would be wise and prudent to be able to ask for that anyway.
That's right.
Just give them priority if they, if any way possible. And I was also asking about some grant funding for some of these, some of the people that can't afford to get into it, but, but need to work and been displaced out of our bay. And also making sure it's out of the way of the traditional uses. I've heard complaints already from guide fishermen, we can't run over there no more and fish because you got these cages up in the water. I mean, so we want to make sure we don't put this stuff in the, in the wrong places. If you do, they're gonna load this room up, and then we're gonna hear complaints that y'all didn't stand up for. So I want to dress this head on and be in the forefront of what we ask for, what DAX does. It really ain't a whole lot that we can do. We oppose this upper water column aquaculture. When it first came about, the Florida cabinet allowed it over in Alligator Harbor, which is where it all started. And those are the things that, that I express the concern about is, is being up in the water column and nobody being able to go cross it in their boat. And if they do, they're gonna tear up these guys' baskets, plus probably tear your motor up. So those are issues we brought up, the Florida cabinet allowed it to happen anyway. So we're kind of, you know, moving, moving forward now.
We need, I'll tell you what else you gonna need some more. At one time, on the wire coat, the state marine patrol just got out of it. But you gonna need some regulation and enforcement in this. And they gonna have to be done, because you don't, you gonna have some body bag.
I've told them all that, Commissioner, but, you know, they think I don't know what I'm talking about. But I can see human conflict real quick. If some guy's oyster ain't growing, and other guy's got some pretty oysters and the guy can't get a gallon of milk for his young ones. You know, you see things that, that the possibilities are endless.
Yeah. So, I mean, I hate to say that, but the truth is the like. And the reason I, when I was young, I worked the water, so I ain't gonna say that a hundred percent be Franklin County code. We left here and went other place, and they let us come in there and work. So I, I, but I still would say seventy-five percent. And, and it's just like you say, it don't matter what we say, it's state, they gonna regulate it anyway. Till it get sticky, they want to get out.
So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, a, a, a motion, officially authorizing Commissioner Parrish to represent us.
Yeah, we've already got a motion sent on the floor.
All right, y'all, any more discussion on?
Yeah, it just didn't need to include travel reimbursement, I guess.
What? You, on this one? I'm quite sure it's gonna be, for future, you can put it in there for future purposes, because it gonna be some meetings up in Tallahassee.
Oh, yeah.
Good point.
Okay, y'all, on the favor?
Aye.
On the poll, that pass now.
Commissioner, that concludes my report. Nothing else?
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Marone? Keep up the good work. Next on the agenda would be Mr. Mike Cusule, Crown Attorney.
Commissioner, the only thing that I have for you is a resolution approving the conveyance of all of the right highlighted interest in a bar pit easement. This was brought up at the meeting last month. The state statute does allow you to convey the easement without receiving any remuneration. Doesn't require you to have a public hearing, but it does require you to adopt this resolution. And essentially, the resolution finds that the transfer of the bar pit easement to the state of Florida serves the public interest and that the bar pit easement is not needed for county purposes. And I, I think Mr. Marone's presentation at the last meeting gives you a factual basis to adopt such a resolution. So unless the board has questions for me, I would request a motion to approve the resolution.
So. Got a motion on the poll by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more question on it? On the favor?
Aye.
On the poll, that passing now.
That's the only action item I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Cusule? Keep up the good work, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner coming?
I have some. Mr. Chairman, just, I had two items I wanted to ask about. We have a action item on the floor probably a couple months ago. And I wanted to defer to Commissioner Parrish as well relative to our airport and our public airport that we have. There was an action item where we would be studying the feasibility of having a airport advisory board for the Appalachian Coliseum Airport. The background was that we see it successfully happening, even though it's not our airport, there at the Caravelle City Airport. The advisory board there has saved that city or hundreds of thousands of dollars in airport issues. And we were looking at the feasibility of having that same type of input to our public airport. A, we're, we're looking to have a citizen advisory committee there. What are the thoughts about going forward on that? Commissioner Parrish, I'd like your thoughts on it as well for your district.
If I may, Commissioner, what you had done at that time is tasked Mr. Pierce on doing some research with that. And he actually did, unfortunately, he's not here today.
Okay.
I saw some of the emails between him, Mr. Pocket, AFCON. He reached out to a few people to find out, you know, the, the need, if it's, if it was required, you know, how it works in, in other airports, county airports, and he did get responses back. Unfortunately, I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Pierce.
Okay.
So I would ask, I would ask that you allow me to have him put in his report at the next meeting and bring that up to you.
Report next month, next meeting?
Next meeting, yes, sir. Is that, is that okay with the board?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I think it'd be, it'd be better, especially if we have full vote.
To discuss it. I do too, that'd be fine.
We don't have a full vote on it, I think.
And then just one other second item I just had, I, I wanted the, the board's opinion, we can just discuss this now, about the possibility of us considering having a retreat among us commissioners here for the purpose of developing guidelines and direction. So that as we are going forward in the next year or so, we're, we're making decisions based on policy and direction rather than sometimes just reacting. And I just wanted you guys, who are old pros at this, to give me some thoughts on the potential of a retreat publicly noticed. I think we'd have to look at the legality of all of that as well. And, and perhaps we would have speakers come in on certain subjects relative to healthcare, relative to environment, relative to issues that we face here repetitively as a board. And what are your thoughts about the possibilities of that and the merits of a retreat?
You just want, I explain that to me a little better.
I'm looking for a workshop day of those of us who are commissioners in a public, more relaxed setting to address specific policy issues that we face here as a board. Just take our hospital as a good example, though we are not daily, hands-on, we need to be knowledgeable about what's going on in that area. We just discussed the, the, the issues of development of our bay and what was going on here. I'm not talking about multiple subjects that are workshop, but perhaps we focus on two or three of what matters most type subjects. We bring in outside expertise to, to, to give us some thoughts on some of these subjects and give, and direction. And perhaps as an outcome in this retreat, we get some board roadmap going forward in direction on how we think and plan for policies going into future for the forthcoming year.
Right, you got no problem if you want to have a workshop.
No, no problem with the workshop either, I just want to, I think we need to address the legality of it before we ever get started.
I do too, yeah, well.
Sunshine law being what it is, you're not supposed to discuss anything that you're gonna vote on, you know, amongst yourselves unless it is out in the public.
But the public would be invited. I've heard counties do this in the past, and the public comes right in with these workshops as well.
Well, you got what you got. That's why I was trying to see what you were talking about, because you, the way, you can have a commissioner thing, and it, it don't have to be a meeting, but it, it could be set up that way. But the way, if you just want a public workshop, where the public invited and.
This is a commissioner workshop with the public invited to be spectators. And we set a, an agenda of some of the areas that we're going to discuss as commissioners. What are your thoughts, Michael?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to look into this. We, we've discussed, not anytime recently, but many years ago, there was a, a discussion among the board about having a retreat. And at that time, when I looked into it, the recommendation was, let's don't have a retreat. It does have, you know, some issues that have to be addressed concerning publicly noticed, public input. And since that time, there's been a new state law drafted that actually requires you to accept public comment during your meetings. And I'm, but as I sit here right now, I'm not sure how that would, and that statute would interact with the ability to have just a board retreat where you publicly notice, the public can press or hear, and you just want to hear from some experts, you know, where these experts want to come from, where's the money going to come from for those experts to provide their opinion. I mean, a lot of issues that need to be addressed. So if you don't mind, I and Mr. Marone will look into this and report back to you at a future meeting.
Please.
Now, we have had a, a boat. Where the boat and get together and cope.
Right, typically, you have, you have conducted workshops in the past, Mr. Chairman, but that's usually for the purpose of having a workshop so that you can receive public comment. And I don't think that's exactly what, what Commissioner Bolt is referring to. He may be referring to more of a retreat setting where it's just the board interacting with your staff, your attorney, and perhaps some outside experts as opposed to a workshop to receive public input, so.
Yeah, my, my workshop theme would be a planning workshop theme. What are, what are our, what matters most in this county that we should be addressing in a workshop setting? These are complex issues that we face a lot, and develop policy and how we look at something going forward.
Now, the board doesn't generally take any action during public comment, but if, if I get a general sense from the board you want me to look at this issue with Mr. Marone, then I will come back and he and I will give a report at a future meeting about what the possibilities are and a recommendation about whether to conduct the, the workshop or a retreat setting or some other setting. Okay?
All right, any more?
Does that need to be in the form of a motion, or is that something?
We don't generally take action during public comment, Mr. Bolt. But, but board direction, I think I get a sense of how the board would like to move forward.
Okay.
And if I'm wrong, y'all can tell me at a future meeting, I got it wrong.
Thank you, appreciate your thoughts on that, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any more commissioner coming? I got one, one that, when y'all get through.
Go ahead, Mr..
Mr. Bevan. He was a commissioner for, I guess, twenty, twenty-something years. And he passed, by the way, he had a funeral in a few minutes. I couldn't go because I stayed with him and he, good man. But I guess what, what I'm gonna ask the board is to adopt something in his district with his name on it, or put some, you know, as they do, something in his district or, or something in the county, I'll put it that way. I don't know whether it's district in the city or what.
Mr. Marone, if I could, how about if there is a communication with the family to see if they're receptive to the board considering that before the board even has any further discussion? I'm not sure how, how the family would feel about that or not, I haven't spoken to anyone. Maybe, maybe y'all have spoken to some of the family members, but we may want to seek the family's input before the board goes any further down, even considering this action.
Okay. But, you know.
But I agree with you, he's a great man and he deserves the honor.
Yeah, get something with a name on it.
Scary talk, Commissioners, but I actually, Commissioner Massey and I actually talked about that. We've been talking about that all weekend long, that after the funeral passed and, you know, everything calms down, we are going to look for something like that, talk to the family first, then I'll bring it back to this board and see how you guys feel about it, and then we'll start to plan an event and do whatever it takes. If it's naming a road or, you know, whatever it takes. But yes, Commissioner Massey and I have already started working on that. So I was pretty much in the same line with the board in that action. Thank you, then, thank you so much.
All right. Any more commissioner coming? Any more commissioner coming? Meeting adjourned.